meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. Good morning. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here. Thank you. And welcome to the Tuesday, May 19, 2020, Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the flag salute led by our very own Supervisor David Couch. Following the flag salute, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we have stated for the last several sessions, the County of Kern has provided notice that as a result of the declared federal, state, and local emergencies due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in light of the governor's order, this Board of Supervisors meeting is not physically open to the public yet. Testimony and general public comment are accepted via email or voice message to the clerk of the board prior to today's meeting, and live comments via teleconference will be heard during the meeting. We will begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a capital C, capital A above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove an item from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. I will now read the Consent Agenda Matters. We are going to be removing one item and hearing from our sheriff this morning, which will be nice. Consent Matters begin on page two, and they include items one and four through six. On page three, items seven through 15. On page four, items 16 through 23. What's the item we're pulling, Kathy? Forty? Got it. Again, on page five, items 24 through 25 and items 28 through 31. On page six, items 32 through 39. And on finally, page seven, items 40 through 44 and item 46. Item 45 will be pulled for separate consideration, that we may hear from our sheriff and myself as well, as I have thoughts to add. Are there any members of staff or my colleagues who would like to pull a matter from consent? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chair, I wanted to announce that we do not have any members of the public requesting to comment on any consent agenda items.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. As to consent matters, we have not received public comment via voicemail or email to comment on any consent matters. So other than the item we removed, 45, I would happily entertain a motion for my colleagues.
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Mick.
Second.
Thank you, David. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
We will move to public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, have you received any public statement regarding or input from the public regarding public presentations?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have received seven comments, and I have provided you with a sheet listing who those speakers are. We have an audio file from Linda Jimenez, and then we have email comments from Dave Wymore, Anita Cannitz, Judy Wu, the Heath family, Carol Bender, and Kern Alliance of Nonprofit Steering Committee. All of those comments have been pre-recorded, so we're going to have them played from the back. You do have hard copies of all of these submissions. Some of the submissions could not be read in the two-minute time limit, but your hard copy contains all of the material that was submitted by all of those members of the public. And we do not have anyone, any members of the public, on the teleconference line waiting to provide public comments. So at this time, we will play all the public comment that's been received.
Oh, thank you.
My name is Linda Jimenez, and just want to let my thoughts be known, and that is that really, we need to just, to my point of view, is it's unnecessary to continue this lockdown, especially in Kern County. I'm just, it doesn't make any sense when the COVID-19 deaths rate is three times lower than the seasonal flu and the recovery rate is 97%. And when the COVID-19 death counts are being fraudulent tatted, people are being financially destroyed, and so much more is going on. Suicide, alcohol abuse, drug abuse, child abuse are going up. We need to put a stop to this, and not hide behind our appointed officers, health officers who represent us, the people of Kern County, and we need to be protected and the livelihoods of our families and our friends. We ask for fully to lift our county's lockdown now so everybody can get back to work. We can do it wisely with caution, but at the same time, you know, we need to go back to work. Thank you.
This statement is from Dave Wymore. Civil and uncivil discourse is to be expected in a public which allows an open market on the expression of ideas in the public square. However, sending organized screaming mobs to target a residential home and terrorize the public, the private citizens who live there, is not the exchange of ideas, it is intimidation and harassment. Reading the Kern County Municipal Code, it appears the code fails to provide protections to ensure residential serenity and safety for the victims of intimidation tactics. Additionally, the code fails to provide our law enforcement a means to intervene and stop the harassing actions. The current code allows organizations, hate groups, or individuals the latitude to harass private citizens in their own homes. The intention of this presentation is not to limit free speech. However, protests should remain in the public sector and not extend to the targeting of a private home solely based on the citizen's employment or their political philosophies. The purpose of government is to provide protections to its citizens while not infringing on the constitutional protection of others. The written proposal presented to the board will provide the legal foundation for this perspective, as well as the United States Supreme Court opinions, which support the creation of a protective municipal code. In conclusion, I respectfully request the Board of Supervisors keep one thing in mind when considering the written arguments. The foundation of any risk management strategy is, if you can predict it, you can prevent it. Harassing terror tactics are taking place nationwide, and it is not a stretch to predict they will be utilized in Kern County. The board has the opportunity to be proactive and prevent psychological trauma from being thrust upon men, women, children, and seniors in the refuge of their private homes. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter.
This statement is from Anita Cannitz. Chairwoman Perez and members of the board, Maya Angelou once said, "Each time a woman stands up for herself without knowing it possibly, without claiming it, she stands up for all women." Like many of the others who read the news stories and watched the Bakersfields conduct unfold, our family wants to thank Kern County, this board, and its staff for understanding the seriousness of violence against women and children. Please continue..."
Okay.
Sorry. Go ahead and keep going.
"...your efforts to protect the safety of our families. Thank you. This message is from Judy Wu. Imagine being quarantined in the most dangerous place for you. Survivors are trapped with social isolation. They don't have a lot of means for escape or for support. Those that may have been lucky enough to escape before the pandemic have gone on to live in a secure residence away from their abusers, or so they thought. Now imagine a city who threatens to sue survivors of domestic violence who request their addresses be removed from the city's website. That's what our city did. Mayor, councilpersons, city manager, and staff, shame on you."
Message from the Heath family. We are writing to you in regards to the COVID-19 virus that is affecting Kern County residents and to those who work in Kern County. As 20-year voting residents of District 2, we wish to express our family's concerns pertaining to the board opening up Kern County too soon. We have watched the AM sessions as the board meets with other county representatives and have listened to the emails and phone messages regarding COVID-19. It is to be said that as leaders of the county, we would wish to see an example from you. What we have seen for ourselves in the live meetings is the lack of interest as the county clerk is reading and playing the messages, watching the disinterest as residents express their concerns, and even watching Madam Chair cough into her closed fist as she turns her head away from the mic and in the direction of Mr. Couch. We would like to see the leaders/BOs practice the required CDC recommendations for safe practice, and also to show the interest and concerns of your constituents by showing that you are actively listening to public comments. When having to leave home to do essential shopping here in Kern County, social distancing is not as common as you'd lead to believe. The CDC has posted the following. The virus is thought to spread mainly from person to person, between people who are in close contact with one another within about six feet, through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs, sneezes, or talks. These droplets can land in the mouths and noses of people who are nearby or possibly be inhaled into the lungs. COVID-19 may be spread by people who are not showing symptoms. We are county-state essential workers and required to continue to do our jobs. We've not been provided CDC proper PPE to do our jobs by our employers despite having asked for it as many essential workers place themselves at risk. Our postal carrier, for example, has been given a cloth mask that does not fit with carbon filter inserts, and we have been told that the USPS..."
Email from Carol Bender. Today, the Wall Street Journal printed an article entitled "Retailers Grapple With Handling Mask Flirts Shoppers." This article reinforces the concern I mentioned in a previous email to the Board of Supervisors. I think it underscores the need to be consistent with guidelines and ordinances for required mask use during this pandemic. It reinforces that having an inconsistent policy or leaving a decision of whether or not to wear a mask up to individual businesses can lead to confusion and irritation to customers. If one business requires a mask and another does not, compliance will falter. As noted previously, we are seeing this locally already, and many other cities/counties are also seeing it. Speaking with friends in other less impacted counties such as Santa Cruz, San Luis Obispo, they say there is much more uniform compliance there. Masks are expected/required. Signs are posted. Some ordinances are in place. I realize that enforcement is always an issue and that there will always be a subset of customers that will refuse to wear a mask, exempting those who don't wear one for valid reasons. The article does address this. I applaud Costco for trying its best to require shoppers to wear masks at all their locations, regardless of whether or not a local requirement is in place. I think we need to have such a local/county ordinance in place. I applaud Arvin for moving in this direction. I also applaud the Kern County Health Department for all the hard work they have done to continue to do so. Taking the active step to fully test local nursing homes immediately is a great intervention. Our medical community has done a great job managing our hospital readiness and helping to keep the death rate down. That is very encouraging. And yes, Kern County has flattened the curve, but it is far from meeting the state's requirements to advance through Stage 2. Originally, the goal was flattening the curve. Now Governor Newsom requires positive tests to meet the one per 10,000 population requirement to proceed..."
Letter from the Kern Alliance of Nonprofit Steering Committee. We are writing to request your consideration of financial support for the nonprofit sector as part of your plan to allocate the $157.1 million in federal aid the County of Kern will receive as part of the CARES Act. As we look forward to reopening and rebuilding the economy, it is imperative that we consider the nonprofit sector. While our nonprofit partners are often viewed primarily as volunteering nature, the reality is they represent a key driver of employment and economic activity. Nonprofits contribute 15% to California's growth state product. One in every 14 Californians.
As we look forward to reopening and rebuilding the economy, it is imperative that we consider the nonprofit sector. While our nonprofit partners are often viewed primarily as volunteering nature, the reality is they represent a key driver of employment and economic activity. Nonprofits contribute 15% to California's growth state product. One in every 14 California jobs is at a nonprofit organization, and nonprofits rank as the third largest by wages among key industries. Since the first day of the COVID-19 public health crisis and subsequent economic crisis, your local nonprofits have been on the front lines serving communities throughout all four corners of the county. From impromptu food distribution events to childcare services for essential workers, nonprofit leaders have not hesitated to meet the growing and ever-changing demands for services, often without any new source of revenue. Kern Community Foundation created the Kern County COVID-19 Relief Fund to provide resources to the region's nonprofit organizations. Over the last eight weeks, the foundation granted nearly $500,000 to approximately 90 organizations, with total requests for funding exceeding $1.8 million. The majority of grants capped at $30,000, focused primarily on delivering services to meet basic needs of food, shelter, and safety for vulnerable populations. Many of the outstanding grant requests are for operational resources. As an unprecedented number of nonprofits have been impacted by reduced revenue streams due to canceled fundraisers-
Madam Chair, members of the Board, that concludes public comment. Thank you. Yes, Supervisor Maggard? My apologies, I see you punched in there.
No problem. Thank you. I recognize we're still getting used to how to do this very differently than we ever have before. Mr. Wymore referenced something that occurred apparently at his residence or at someone's residence. I'm not familiar with any of the details of some group descending upon his house and whatever occurred there. So if someone has that background, could you forward that to me or to us, just so we're aware of that circumstance? Because I'm not familiar with what he's talking about.
Yes, sir, I will do so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Supervisor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Same position. Anything else, Supervisor Maggard?
No.
Okay. We're going to move along then, Ms. Kraus, seeing no other comments or input from my colleagues, and move to Board member announcements or reports. On their own initiative, of course, Board members may make an announcement or a report on their own activities. At this time, I would ask Mr. Jordan Kaufman if he could please come to the podium and provides, or staff table, whichever is appropriate, to provide some input on your expertise and make sure that the public is aware of information that is so critical to their own lives and well-being. So appreciate your expertise and your communication to the public.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to give your Board and the public an update on property tax collections, where we are, and also the Governor's Executive Order related to the collection of property taxes that obviously will impact Kern County taxpayers. So first, I wanted to talk about kind of where we are from a property tax collection standpoint. I have all the data as of last Friday, May 15th. So the total charge, the amount that we're supposed to collect at 100% is just shy of $1.3 billion, so $1.297 billion. What we've collected as of last Friday is $1.227 billion, so about $69 million less than 100%. That represents a 94% collection rate, actually 94.6%. If we compare that to a normal year, we would be at about 97.3% collected as of May 15th. And so that difference, excuse me, that difference of about 2.7% represents about $35 million. So to date, we're about $35 million undercollected compared to where we would have been in a normal year. Now, of that $35 million, actually $25 million of that is from one taxpayer, one very large taxpayer in the county. So if you actually take that out, we're looking pretty good. Collections were fairly, fairly, fairly good. Obviously, less than a normal year, but I think most people did pay their taxes, the ones that could, did. Now, that $35 million doesn't represent money that we will never get, it just represents money that we will get at a later date. How late, you ask, is an excellent question. So that's where I would talk about the Governor's Order. On May 6th, the Governor signed Executive Order Number N-61-20 that essentially gave taxpayers a year to pay their taxes without penalty. That was significantly longer than tax collectors up and down the state had expected, but it is what it is. Good for the taxpayers. So what I wanted to do is read a couple of snippets from the Executive Order and then translate those into English.
Without a penalty, is that right?
Yes, to pay late without penalty. Absolutely, absolutely. So the Governor's Order talks about suspending a whole bunch of Revenue and Taxation Code sections up until May 6th, 2021. So again, one year beyond when he signed the Executive Order. So it says, "Those code sections will be suspended until May 6th, 2021, to the extent that it requires a tax collector to impose penalties, costs, and interest for failure to pay taxes on property on the secured roll, the unsecured roll, and the supplemental roll," so pretty much everything, "or before the date and time such taxes become delinquent and a tax collector shall," not "may," but "shall," "cancel such penalties, costs, and interest provided all of the following conditions are satisfied." And then he goes on to list a few of the conditions. So I'm going to just read you a few of the main ones. I want to try and be brief. So the biggest one is, "The property for which taxes were not paid must either be a residential real property occupied by the taxpayer." So that is someone's primary residence, okay? But then it goes on to say that it doesn't qualify if you pay your property taxes through an impound account. So those do not qualify because you're already, you know, you've been paying your taxes through impound. So primary residence not paid through impound. All of those properties would potentially qualify for penalty relief under the Executive Order. The second one is real business, excuse me, real property owned and operated by a taxpayer that qualifies as a small business under the Small Business Administration's regulations. So if you've ever been to the SBA website, you will see that there are over 1,100 different business categories, all with their own distinct definition of what is a small business for that business category. So we will be obviously looking at those on a case-by-case basis to make sure that they meet that criteria. It also goes on to say that taxes owed on the property in question were not delinquent prior to March 4th, 2020. So what that means is if there was a prior delinquency, say someone didn't pay their December tax bill or their December installment, they would not qualify for relief under this Executive Order. And then it says the taxes owed on the, excuse me, the taxpayer timely files a claim for relief in a form and manner prescribed by the tax collector. So I have a COVID-19, special COVID-19 penalty waiver request form and application on my website. It's up and available to the public right now. There's a lot of detail around that, but I'm not going to really go into it here. It is on the homepage of my website, big and bold, you can't miss it. I've also included on my website the Executive Order so that anybody can read that as well. I will say, in a positive step, as of yesterday, I do have actual staff in the office, and the phone lines for the treasurer tax collector are open. And so taxpayers can, while they can't come into the building to ask questions, they can call and talk to a live person to hopefully answer all of their questions related to the COVID-19 penalty waiver request process or anything else related to taxes. So that really concludes my update. I wanted to be brief, just wanted to let you know where we are, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
That is very illuminating. Jordan, thank you so much, and this is better news than I expected, so I'm quite pleased. Gentlemen, any input or questions? Okay, Jordan, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work, we appreciate you. Before I move to my colleague Supervisor Maggard and Scrivner regarding their incredible work and leadership in reopening our economy, I do need to read some information about our calendar and what we will be planning over the summer. I apologize, it is lengthy, but it is necessary to place on the record and to inform the public of our intentions. "In the continuing effort to streamline Board meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic, it is timely for this Board to consider moving to an every-other-week meeting schedule during the months of June and July. In order to effect this change, the Board would modify its meeting calendar to cancel the Tuesday, June 9 and June 23 meetings, and to add a regular meeting on Tuesday, June 30, where we had previously not scheduled one. The Board's revised meeting schedule for June would include regularly scheduled meetings every other week on Tuesday, June 2, June 16, and June 30. In adhering to statutory requirements, the County Administrative Office would schedule adoption of the preliminary recommended budget for fiscal year 2020/2021 at the June 30, 2020 meeting. During the month of July, the following Board meeting revisions would provide the County Administrative Office additional time necessary to develop the fiscal year 2020/2021 recommended budget. The evening budget discussion meeting, currently scheduled for 6:00 p.m. on Monday, July 20, for the purpose of receiving public comment on the budget, would be moved to Monday, August 3 at 6:00 p.m., with budget discussion also to be held at the regular meeting on Tuesday, August 4 during the 9:00 a.m. session, very next morning. It is proposed to cancel the Tuesday, July 21, regular meeting, which will revise the July schedule to include meetings every other week on Tuesday, July 14, and Tuesday, July 28. I would request the Clerk of the Board bring an item forward at our next meeting on June 2 to include the necessary steps for the Board to consider these changes. This action would include direction that any notice hearing scheduled on June 9, June 23, or July 21 would respectively be continued to June 16, June 30, and July 28." I would like to add that it is a goal of ours, and we have received input from our Public Health Director, that we are attempting to socially distance 50% of the time. We know we can't do it 100% of the time, but a difference between 40 and 50 is pretty profound in the spread of the virus, apparently, in particular to our elderly, which are uniquely vulnerable. So this would be consistent with a 50% social distancing goal, as to cut our meetings essentially in half through the months of June and July, and of course, return and revisit these issues at the end of the summer, as we know more. The issue, of course, is continually and rapidly evolving. Do we need a vote on that matter? Kathy?
Your direction is sufficient. I'll bring an item back on June 2nd.
Okay, seeing no input plugged in from my colleagues, I'm going to move right along and ask my colleagues, Supervisor Maggard and Supervisor Scrivner, to provide some input and detail on their leadership, which is proving to be quite effective and I am personally quite grateful for. So gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, colleagues, for the opportunity to serve on the Set Out Committee. It's been quite an experience. These are unique times that we live in, and I want to just explain a little bit about the circumstances of where we find ourselves now. So we have met, first, let me back up and say thank you to a few people. There are a handful of people, and I can't mention all of them, but I want to mention those that lead each of the faces of the effort, that have just done tremendous work. And we would not be where we are, we would not be this afternoon voting on sending an attestation plan to the Governor and reopening businesses were it not for the absolute self-sacrificing, diligent work by these people. So first of all, I want to thank Zach Scrivner. He has been a tremendous effort, and he's put tremendous effort into this. I get contacted from him morning, evening, night, weekends. It is a constant, constant dialogue, and I want to thank Supervisor Scrivner for his leadership and his dedication and his sacrifice on behalf of the people of Kern County. I also want to thank Ryan Alsop. I know that it might just appear that Ryan shows up on Tuesdays, but there's more to it than that, and we are very, very grateful for his relationships around the state. There's more than one reason that we hired Ryan to come work for us, but right now, we're seeing the fruit of the whole package that is Ryan Alsop. So I want to thank him specifically for that. Matt Constantine, Matt Constantine has just been an extraordinary partner in this, helping us stamp out, you know, raging crises at senior nursing facilities and trying to monitor where we are with the disease and how we manage it, how we measure it, the interpretation of countless rules to the public. Matt has been tremendous, and I want to thank him for his effort. Jason Weeby was added to the team, pulled over from the CEO's office into public health to help us craft this attestation plan that we're going to see this afternoon. And I want to, we wouldn't be here without Jason, being the expert that we know that he is on, he's so good at doing many things. He'll tell you that he's not any expert on all of this COVID stuff, but he certainly is working day and night to try to be there. Those people are backed up by a whole cadre of staff people that help in their efforts. I also want to thank, we're going to see later today, the efforts of Margot Razan and Jim Zervis pay off as we try to put forward our effort for the issuing of business loans to small businesses in our community to help them get going. So there's, I'm going to stop there. There's lots of people that support them, but we would not be here without those people. So I want to first of all, thank them for that. This morning, I know there's a lot of anticipation about what we're going to do, and we're actually going to do the meat and potatoes of this, vote on it this afternoon. We are waiting for our 10 o'clock update as to our most latest statistics so we can incorporate those into our attestation plan, but we're going to actually vote on this this afternoon. What has happened is that in the interim since we last met, we are now in a full-blown effort to meet with industry sectors all across Kern County. Countless phone calls, Zoom meetings, Teams meetings, individual calls have been made to try to gather as much input as we can from people to get best practices that are available for them to use when we are given the green light that they can open up again. So that effort is well underway. In our meeting with physicians, well, back up there for just a second, what is clear is that every day, the edicts that are passed down from Sacramento change. It is a, the goalposts change constantly, and we are trying to be nimble and stay on top of that, but it requires changes all the time. And when it became apparent that we needed to have the attestation of our hospital partners in Kern County, we convened an industry sector that was all those hospital CAOs and their, and many of our leading physicians with various levels of expertise about COVID issues and about capacity. Because of all the things that are necessary for us to have in place before we can move forward, we must, the initial charge from the Governor was that we needed to manage the capacity of our hospitals to be able to receive patients, have ICU capacity, have ventilator capacity, and be prepared to, be prepared to handle whatever surge might occur. And the whole idea about flattening the curve was just to make sure that capacity was adequate. We have gone to great lengths to assure that that's the case in Kern County, and we conveyed this group of physicians and hospital administrators. And what we, as we were struggling with the two metrics that were really troublesome in this rollout to try to move through Phase 2 and on to eventually to Phase 3, the two that were so troublesome to us were an arbitrary number that there could be no deaths in your county during the last 14 days. And the second issue was whether or not there could be no more than one case per 10,000 positive test results, 10,000 of your population. That equates to about 90 people in the last 14 days in Kern County. Let's take the death issue first. These are tragic, horrible tragedies for families and obviously the individuals. Patients dying without their families at their side in hospitals. You have to thank God for kind people like nurses and the support staff and physicians who are the only human touch that is there with those people in their last moments on earth. And as tragic, but as tragic as those deaths are, they do not reflect whether or not we have sufficient capacity to treat those that are not yet ill, that are going to inevitably become ill, because they reflect what has happened in the past and what is not going to happen in the future. So we talked with these physicians and talked about the necessity to analyze those deaths to figure out what, to break down the segmentation of what comprises those that have been unfortunate enough to pass away. What is their age? Do they have comorbidities? That means, do they have COPD, or diabetes, or heart disease, or lung cancer, or some other malady that is, you know, very much endangering their life otherwise? And one of the doctors I remember specifically said that in his reading, 80, and I'm not a physician, I'm just conveying what a physician told me, but 80% across the country of the people who are dying are people who are more than 65 years of age and have some significant, at least- at least one significant comorbidity. So not all deaths are the same in helping us predict whether or not we can move forward. That became an essential element in our argument, in our, when we forwarded our cause to the governor. The second issue that was, that really was the game changer for us, was that the, one of the physicians stepped up and explained that the, we were looking at this ratio of one per 10,000 positive tests. Well, it's inevitable as we test more and more people, we're going to be soon at the level, we have the capacity now, we will soon be at the level that we'll be testing thousands of people a day. More and more tests will be positive. So an arbitrary number as to how many tests we can have positive didn't work. And this physician explained that the real key is that we must be measuring the amount of hospitalizations that are occurring during, of all of those that are testing positive, hospitalizations compared to positive tests. And that gives us a much better way to gauge whether or not we can watch the capacity in our hospitals be managed appropriately. That was a game changer. And now, as I've watched and read many things about what has rolled out across the state, we certainly made that argument, and the governor read, we know he read specifically and listened to us. Other counties made similar arguments. Here's one of the ways where we have, we had a contact with Dr. Golly, who is one of the main advisors to the governor, and explained the logic of our thinking there, and we know that that was effectively communicated at the governor's level. All of those things were pivotal in leading to the governor changing the metrics by which we can be measured and judged before, as we can move into further through Phase 2 and eventually to Phase 3. So I just thought it was worth you hearing, this has become a lot more than just a discussion with business people about how we get them back open. It has morphed into much, much more than that, and I just want to thank again all those people who have been involved, because the governor listened. He has, he has a most difficult job. You know, let's set aside any partisan, any philosophical differences we might have with him and his staff, his administration. He too is trying to protect the lives of Californians, and so I am grateful that he listened, that he saw the soundness of the logic that we posited to him, and that we are now in a position this afternoon to put before you an attestation that we are prepared to move forward, we can manage our hospital capacity, we can manage the, those that are ill, we can test those that are not to see how the disease is progressing, we can trace the contacts of those, all the elements that are there, we are prepared to move forward with. So this afternoon, after we have folded in this morning's numbers that we're going to receive here in just in the next 15, 20 minutes, that'll be incorporated into our plan, and our attestation plan will be presented to us during our 2 o'clock session. First, a vote and a move on to the governor. So I'm happy to entertain your questions you might have, but I want to thank again Supervisor Scrivener and ask him to fill in whatever I'm sure gaps I've left in this.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. Actually, I don't think you did leave any gaps that I could see. I think that that was a great report, and I appreciate you putting that together. It was very thoughtful and covered a lot of territory. I just, I want to stress to my colleagues and to the public, what a Herculean lift that was for us to get the governor to modify those two conditions, the one on the death rate for 14 days and the infection rate in a 14-day period, one per 10,000. That would have been very, very difficult for a county of our size. You know, I may go so far as to say not possible, particularly when, at the same time, the directive was to ramp up testing. And so that made it very difficult. And so that, that meeting that we had on that call with those 10 acute care hospitals, with all their CEOs and their chief medical officers, where we presented to them what we felt was the biggest problem with those two, with those two data points, and getting their input and their unanimous consent that there were better ways to measure this. Supervisor Maggard said, and I think that this needs to be stressed as we move forward here, is that the reason that we locked down our economy, the reason people, the leadership and the national level, state level said, "You must stay home if you can," was to prevent that surge of patients in hospitals, so you didn't have to make a choice between one person getting a ventilator and one person not getting it. And that would be, that'd be a horrible choice for anyone in the medical community to have to make. We saw that unfortunately happening in countries like Italy. We heard those stories when their, when their surge was high. And so I think it's important for us to remember that that was the driving argument for this lockdown. We have continued to demonstrate in Kern County that our hospitalization rate, both regular and ICU, has been flat over the course of the last several weeks. We've had, we've seen virtually no increase, and that, I think, is the reason why we could thoughtfully and safely and responsibly present to the governor a different way to measure it. And I do agree that it's, it was, it was a wonderful, wonderful thing for us, for our community to be able to have that change. That's what now is going to allow, once we discuss this attestation plan, our readiness plan, and present that, I believe that it will be accepted, because we hit every single measurement on there for being able to accelerate through Stage 2. I know, you know, folks are still wondering about different kinds of businesses that are in Stage 3, and so my hope is that we're able to accelerate through Stage 2 and demonstrate that we can do that responsibly, and then we'll need to start, start pushing forward to get the Stage 3 businesses open safely and responsibly, salons, churches, et cetera. I want to reiterate the thanks to staff. We had that call with the physician group and the hospitals on a Wednesday night at 5:00, got off about 6:30 or so, and staff had that letter in the governor's hands by the end of the week, and then you saw the result on Monday, when he did his press conference, how that moved the needle for us tremendously. And they've done the same thing with this, with this readiness plan that we're going to be looking at this afternoon. They really have done marvelous work and have worked very, very hard, and I know overtime on getting, on getting that done. So my thanks to staff and to Supervisor Maggard, thank you for your leadership, and I appreciate the colleagues, our colleagues indulging us so we could give you a report. Thank you.
Mike Maggard and Zach Scrivener, that absolutely stellar leadership, presentation, and movement. I am really, really impressed and so grateful, sincerely grateful for the thoughtful, methodical approach that you're taking and the relationship that continues to evolve with the governor's administration. I am just so pleased. Mick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm back on board. I'm back, completely back on board, because now I understand the strategy that the governor and Kern County have come to adopt and see, and I understand that we are now moving towards a place where we can clearly define and measure our success. And it was because of the efforts of you two and the community, and I'm sincerely appreciative. Great work to all of, everybody for doing it. Thank you.
Well said, Supervisor. So thank you, gentlemen, really, and we are moving, and it is precisely due to the way in which you have led us through this. So hats off. We're going to move to item number 26, which is county administrative office, and that would be Mr. Alsop. Update on Kern County's Low Barrier Navigation Center located at 2900 M Street, Bakersfield. And I just have to say that this is such an incredible moment for Kern County. You pulled this off during the COVID pandemic, you kept moving, slow and steady, making progress, and being focused on this shelter and the need to transition folks into stability with a wraparound methodology. Really, it's beautiful, it is, it looks safe, there's kennel space, there's storage space. I really feel like we've stepped up our game in a very meaningful way, and, you know, Amanda, you're a really incredible asset, and the work you're doing for Kern is transformative and historical. So thank you for your contribution to that. Mr. Alsop, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Madam Chairwoman, you took the words right out of my mouth, but I want to just hand it over to Ms. Reeves, who is a member of our staff in the CEO's office, who has been really the lead on this project from the start, and really, the, our success has really been a credit, really a credit to her efforts and leadership. And I want to also say thank you to Jeff Hill, who is not in the room, but Jeffrey Hill, who oversees our general services, he's our chief general services officer, who managed the construction side. Obviously, there was a whole bunch of other folks involved. I think Amanda is going to talk about some of that, so I'm just going to hand it over to her for her presentation today.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Today, I'd like to provide your board an update on our new navigation center. In less than six months, we have completed construction. Since that time, our operator, Community Action Partnership of Kern, or CAP-K, has moved in and trained staff. The newly-named M Street Navigation Center officially opened last Thursday, May 14th. Today, we have nine individuals residing at the center, and more are coming. I do have to make sure I express my gratitude to the many departments and partners who have helped construct and begin operation of the navigation center. So I want to thank our CAO for his leadership on this project. Thank you to Jeff Hill and all of general services, particularly Danny Moreno, Kim Domingo, and especially Jim Weiner, who is our eyes on the ground there every day, including weekends, most weekends. Thank you to our building inspection division, fire prevention, public health, particularly Matt Constantine and Amy Rutledge for our environmental health unit, Ann Garza and county council, Kern Medical, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, our Kern County Sheriff's Office, our countywide communications, the Department of Human Services, Veteran Services, Jim Wheeler and Flood Ministries, City Serve, and especially CAP-K, specifically Sheila Shigas, Jeremy Tobias, Pritika Ram, Jonathan Flores, Rebecca Moreno, and Lori Huey. Due to the current climate, we unfortunately were not able to have the grand opening we had hoped to have. Instead, we hope to give your board and the public a glimpse of the construction that was done in a few short months and a virtual tour inside of the new M Street Navigation Center. And we have those videos ready for you.
I'm Sheila Shigas of Community Action Partnership of Kern, also known as CAP-K. In partnership with the county, CAP-K's M Street Navigation Center services will address the root causes of homelessness and build resilience and self-sufficiency of homeless individuals with assistance of various service providers. M Street will offer help and hope through daily meals, overnight shelter beds, showers, laundry, mental health and medical services, job training, and housing employment assistance. Thank you for joining me for this virtual tour. One of the most important areas at M Street, reception and intake, is where the support journey begins for every person who enters through M Street doors. These rooms will provide M Street residents a private and safe space to meet and discuss with medical and mental health professionals, their story of homelessness, and immediate and long-term needs to end the cycle. Overnight residents and walk-in clients will receive their meals and congregate here in the common area for daily activities. CAP-K's central kitchen will deliver meals daily. Staff and community volunteers will help prep, serve, and clean up after each meal. At full capacity, the overnight dormitory will shelter 150 people each night. Women and men will be housed in separate areas of the building with onsite security. Personal care through showers and laundry services will be open to homeless residents and walk-in clients. And last, but never least, M Street Center will offer pet care and kennels to residents who, like many of us, consider their pets family. Thank you for joining us for our virtual tour of the new County of Kern M Street Navigation Center today. CAP-K and the County of Kern are committed to providing a safe and welcoming space where compassion and services intersect to improve lives for homeless individuals in our community. Our goal is to be a good neighbor, and we hope that you too will join us in serving and giving your time and resources at M Street. Thank you in advance for supporting us in creating a better life for someone in need today. Please visit our website at www.capk.org, or email us any questions or concerns you may have to info@capk.org. Thank you.
So that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Who made the video?
That was Kay Gub, so our communications.
Oh, fan apps, I wasn't sure if CAP-K made it, because it's really fabulous, and it's a quick snapshot, here's what it looks like, here's the purpose, and there's such a great spirit and tone to it, which I think is just so important. So Amanda, thank you. It looks like Supervisor Gleason may have some questions. Was that from before? Okay, gentlemen, any comments or questions at this time? Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you. I want to thank staff for their dedication to get this done. You have just demonstrated our commitment to do the right thing and to help those that are in need, and to solve a problem that is plaguing the rest of our society. So I want to thank you all for your effort in that regard, and, you know, it's, the way it works, the page will turn, we'll go on and deal with a million problems that will still face us, and we won't often turn back and say, "Thank you." But for today, know that we are grateful to all of you for what you've done.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. Any other comments? I understand we have no public comment, so thank you for that, Kathy.
Correct.
And it doesn't appear as though we have any other statement from the diocese or staff, so do we need to just receive the information, and especially to the public? How exciting. Are we doing outreach to let folks know, homeless people know that there's a, you know, warm place to better themselves?
So we have partnered with Flood Ministry, so they already do our street outreach through a contract with Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, so they're doing those referrals and bringing those individuals who choose to come stay and bringing them to the navigation center.
Do we have any reason to believe that we will have difficulty filling the navigation center for lack of access to people or communicating effectively?
No. Well, we've been seeing a good flow of individuals coming in, and I think that'll increase as the word does get out.
Got it. That's very helpful. Supervisor Gleason?
Couple of quick comments. First of all, my congratulations on a Herculean effort to do this in that period of time with the amount of funds we have and the situation we're confronted with. Great job, you and your whole team. I also know that this is just one step of a process that's going to get the homeless, improve the situation of the homeless. So my question is, we're spending a lot of money on this, and we want this to be successful. It's beautiful, it's hot, warming, it's all those things which are really positive and good, but we need to keep our eyes on the goalposts, which are to do what exactly? What are we trying to do by doing this, this effort? What do we, what's our goal? Is it to move people? How do we measure the success of this new multimillion-dollar facility? Is it to graduate people from this facility and measure them out the door, or is it take, take them in? How are we knowing that we, the money we're spending is the right thing to do?
So we have a set of measurable outcomes that we have implemented. So obviously, the main goal is to have these individuals exit into permanent housing, and so we have those, we'll look at how long that they're staying, how long is it taking? That's why we have staff onsite that are housing navigators that will navigate them out and address those barriers, whatever those may be, while they're staying with us and then transition them out. So the purpose of those wraparound services will be to address those mental health care issues, medical issues, address those to stabilize them, and then for the purposes of having them exit to permanent housing.
I think that's a great question, answer, and I think, I know this is a process in flux, and we're just trying to get in there, and those answers will be better defined as we move forward, and we'll find ways to make this even more successful. I'm just proud to be part of a community that is willing to take the risk, to spend those dollars, to provide this service, to improve the condition of the lives of those people that are so in need. people that are so in need. So my hat's off to you, and a great job, Ryan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Gleason. Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you. I forgot to ask for clarification of one item that I think the public will be interested in, and that is, we see the proliferation of homeless camps throughout our community. And our primary goal was to break up those homeless camps and move those people into this, our, our laborary shelter and transition them into housing. So can you explain a little bit about the governor, his directive as to not breaking up those camps because of the potential for the spreading of the COVID disease if, if we scatter them across the community? Can you walk us through that, please?
Yeah, so based on CDC guidelines, they have recommended that we do not break up encampments at this time for fear that we would spread the virus should whatever homeless individuals, you know, test positive for that. So right now, that is the direction. We're on weekly calls with our local homeless service providers discussing that. We know that that's a frustration with the opening of our navigation center. If we're hearing those concerns, we are contacting Flood and contacting our own code compliance, but we are a little bit restricted based on those recommendations. But the positive note is that we can send Flood out there, and they can make that connection and then refer them to the navigation center.
Very good. I just want the public to not think for a moment that we're not aware of that and not monitoring it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. Any other comments, questions, or action? Okay, we appreciate your hard work. Thank you for your devotion to this, and I look forward to seeing the efficient and, you know, worthwhile productivity of, of this place with, you know, our best and brightest all in on it. So thank you. Moving on to item number 27, Mr. Zervis, I understand the floor will be yours soon. This is a proposed authorization for a chief administration officer or designee to enter into agreements with local lenders for the administration, loan agreements with small businesses, and banking and escrow agreements to fund the Kern Small Business Relief Program, funded with the Corona, Coronavirus Relief Fund. And I have to say, Mr. Allsup, I think you got Mr. Zervis on your team right on time. We've really lucked out by your expertise and your professionalism, your energy. You are making Kern County perform at a, at a more excellent level, and I appreciate that. So, or an excellent level, you know what I mean. The floor is yours, Mr. Zervis.
Madam Chair, thank you for those, those kind words. I appreciate it. And, and let me start by, by just providing a little background. So on, on, on March 27th, the federal government passed the CARES Act, was signed into law and provided an abundance of different stimulus that came into the economy in different forms, one of those being the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which was a pool of money that was made available to state and local governments with over 500,000 in population. And on April 23rd, the County of Kern received $157 million allocation from that Coronavirus Relief Fund. May 5th, we came before your board, and your board approved an initial utilization plan for that money, allocating it to different potential uses, some of which were, were the county's costs and running the emergency operations center, the alternative care site, testing, which we see being implemented now, all of those, those county uses, local government assistance, you know, some for our, our, our other sensitivities. But one, one of the big allocations here was, was $25 million set aside for small business support. And, and in that presentation, we talked briefly about that looking somewhat similar to the federal paycheck protection program that had, that had just been released and was, was kind of out in the wild. And that was actually before the second round allocation of funds was made available by the federal government, or very close to that time. And, and so as we look at how to best deliver this $25 million allocation to support our small businesses, we need to do that in a way that, that we can get this money out quickly to the businesses that need assistance. It's not going to help six months from now or a year from now because they're going through this trying time right now, and they, they're in desperate need of that assistance. We need to do it in a conservative way that, that we can reach all aspects of Kern County. So we're a large county, a diverse county, and we need to be able to implement a program that's manageable and efficient, but can reach all aspects of our county to provide that support and in a way that's accountable, right, and transparent, so that we know where the funds are going, how they're being allocated, and we can follow up and measure those things after we're, or as we move through this program. In order to achieve those goals, we reached out to a group of four local, locally-based lenders to, to work with the county for two purposes. One, to potentially help us deliver this program and to leverage their experience in working in the business community, but also to understand from them what pitfalls, what issues have come up with the federal PPP program that we can work to address in our county program and maybe alleviate some of those issues, simplify that process, and try to help the, the program on, on a more local level, something that is, is more fine-tuned for Kern County specifically. And those, those four institutions have been of great help. They include Mission Bank, Valley Republic Bank, Valley Strong Credit Union, and Alta One Credit Union. We are working on agreements with all of them now and hope to have those done by the end of the week that would engage them to help deliver this program countywide. And, and they've been, been valuable partners in, in this program. We've also reached out to the Greater Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and the Small Business Development Corporation to hear from them as we, we got their input on developing this program. And so, so today, we bring forth to you kind of the culmination of all of those, all of that work with a framework on, on we, how we're going to implement and move forward with this small business support program. So similar to the federal PPP program, this, this program would be a forgivable loan structure, meaning that we would loan funds to small businesses in need, and that if they complied with the general provisions of that agreement, it would be forgiven. And up until the point of forgiveness, there's a deferral. So there's no payments that are due until the point that a decision is made and that, that the loan amounts are forgiven and that, that nothing is due at that point. It is a, it is a program that does help support payroll, but it's not as payroll-centric and heavy as what the federal PPP program consisted of. So our, our program, as I mentioned, targets small businesses, as Mr. Kaufman alluded to a moment ago or mentioned a moment ago. If you go to the SBA definition of small business, it is very complicated and encompassing, a large number of businesses in specific different industries. We wanted to really target those local small businesses that were, were truly small in our site. And so we didn't, we chose not to follow the SBA small business definition. We are targeting businesses with under 50 employees and under $5 million in gross revenue from 2019. So 50 employees and 5 million is the definition of small business that we're using. These are local, meeting our local preference or our local definition of a local vendor, so there are some criteria as to being local, meaning that they have a place of business in Kern County, they either are owned by someone in Kern County or employ people directly in Kern County. These are locally owned and operated. So this is independently owned and operated. We're not looking for big corporate franchises. We are looking for owned and operated businesses, small businesses in Kern County. And so that's the, the group that we are, we are designating as eligible for this program. The, the program itself would lend up to $75,000 to an eligible business. That's the maximum. We are calculating it based on four times the average monthly payroll. So the federal PPP program was two and a half times. We've chosen to expand that to four times. Why? Because that gives us the ability to target smaller businesses, provide them more assistance for that time period. The federal program requires that the PPP funds be spent in eight weeks. We've designed our program to be spent in 16 weeks. That was intentional in order to bridge this gap of reopening, so that as businesses, they're uncertain how, how fast and to what extent they can reopen and, and are concerned with having to bring back a lot of employees before they are able to bring in customers. We're able to, to target this and give them more time to allocate these funds to help bridge that reopening period. It's important to note that the federal PPP program does require that employers that participate in the program bring back all of their employees and that they don't, they don't restrict their wages, they don't, they don't reduce their wages. It is an effort to bring back full employment and maintain that payroll, and while, while that achieves certain goals, it also causes certain problems for the businesses that are, are restricted from, from what they can do to serve their customers. So we've intentionally left those components out of this program. Those are not requirements of, of the Small Business Relief Program that we're proposing here today. The, the loans would be forgiven so long as they are spent within the 16 weeks and for allowable uses. The allowable uses under this program include 34% or at least 34% of the loan proceeds would, would be used for payroll and payroll-related costs, meaning health insurance, payroll taxes, those types of things. 33% to be used for rent, utilities, mortgage interest, and 33% to be used for general working capital. That would provide some needed flexibility for these, for these businesses as opposed to being so centric on payroll. The federal program requires 75% to be used on payroll and, and provides nothing for general working capital needs. I will say it's important to note, because this is a funding through the CARES Act, that this does have to go to mitigate impacts of COVID. So this program assumes, and, and we require the, the participating businesses to attest that they've been negatively impacted by COVID, and the loan proceeds are going to mitigate those COVID-related impacts on their business. That is, the, the purpose is to help those struggling businesses through this, through the pandemic, and as they are able to restart their business, to provide flexibility for them to use this program to bridge between either the limited or no business they're currently doing to getting back into a, an operating, at an operating level that they can be sustainable. That is the goal of the program. I would, would include that we are prioritizing the industries that have been hit the hardest. So we are prioritizing restaurants, beauty salons, barbers, tourism, hotels, to the extent they meet the criteria. So, and, and any non-essential business that, according to the governor, governor has been designated as non-essential and, and not able to be in business. So those in, in our site are, are the most impacted, and we, we would, we're going to offer preference to their applications, that they would be treated with preference as they move through the application process. We do anticipate a large number of applications coming in, which is another reason why we're strategically using four different lenders to help process those. And, and we would, we would be seeking to issue preference to those industries. This program also does propose a phased, or not really a stage rollout, meaning the first two weeks, we are targeting local restaurants, that applications would only be received from, from local restaurants that meet all the other criteria for that two-week period. After that two-week period, they would be opened up to any, any small business that, a local small business that meets the, the program guidelines. I did include a draft of program guidelines with the original board letter. It's in your agenda package. And this morning, the clerk handed out a revised version, and there are some red line notes on the back of it. These guidelines are continuing to evolve because we're working on this daily. It's, it's getting, trying to get this program launched has, has been a big effort, and as we work through with our different strategic partners and get feedback, we're making small modifications and clarifications to those guidelines to better address those, any concerns or feedback we're receiving. And so I do want to walk through some of the red lines as you've, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to read the, the original guidelines, so I just want to cover what's changed, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions at, at that point. So on page one of the guidelines, nothing has changed, so all, all of that information remains the same. I would point out that, that the applicants for this program can be corporations, partnerships, LLCs, or sole proprietors. So we're not excluding the sole proprietor, we're not excluding the business that has no employees, that, that just has maybe an owner-operator that takes a draw from his business. So we're, we're including that. You don't have to have payroll necessarily in order to qualify for this. We have a way to measure that, and that's, that's going to be covered on page two, but just, just wanted to point that out. On page two, under, under three, three A3, here is where we have, have quantified how we measure the small business owner that takes a, a draw from his business as opposed to a payroll check. Because our, our calculations are based on payroll for that owner, it's just based on an average net schedule C profit for calendar year 2019. So we're just saying, hey, we recognize that you don't take a paycheck and have a traditional payroll, we can quantify that based on your last tax return, and, and that's how we've done that. You'll see in 3B, we've actually amended the percentages under the program. Originally, we were proposing 50% for payroll, 10% for general working capital, and 40% for rent, mortgage, interest, and utilities. Those were modified to 34% for payroll, 33% for general working capital, 33% for rent, mortgage, interest, and utilities. That was intentional to provide additional flexibility for these businesses as they start to operate. They may have more fixed costs that they're incurring than payroll-related costs, just because the customers, the customers may not be there. Item 3C, we have loan proceeds may be used to pay employees a premium wage as an incentive for rehiring and retaining employees, so long as the premium hourly wage does not exceed 15% of the employee's hourly wage immediately prior to March 15th. So that we, originally, we didn't have any provision as to how much or little you paid your employees. That's really a, a matter up to the business, but there was some question as to whether or not it was allowed, so we did go ahead and quantify it here. We think it's important to be able to provide flexibility for employers to pay a little more, especially in, in the circumstances we are now, where we have a lot of employees or ex-employees that are, are no longer working but receiving an enhanced unemployment benefit. So this is a way to try to incentivize them to come back to the workplace. We did change or really clarify the interest rate associated with the loan. We had two different steps before we simplified that to just issue this loan with a 1% interest rate. The interest is forgiven along with the principal, as long as they meet the eligibility criteria at the reporting period, but if they don't, then they would, the, the recipient would be required to repay a 1% interest rate with any funds that weren't spent in accordance with the program guidelines. And those are, that's it for the, the changes. And I think we, we covered most of the, most of the main points for the program. I, I will tell you, we've been pushing and working diligently to try to launch this program next week after, after Memorial Day weekend, and that's still our intent. It is, and it's, we still have a lot to do to make that happen, but that is, that is the goal, that's the timeline we're working on. And we will be out after your consideration and approval of this. We will be out making this program aware to the publics through the chambers throughout the county and getting the word out. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Zervis, thank you so much for your hard work and expertise. Mr. Magard, Supervisor Magard has some questions for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I knew I was going to like this guy. He, he is a CPA by training, so he is hiding today his pocket. It, it means you're boring and you probably have on black socks, so there's some downsides to it. But it means you've hidden your pocket protector today and your visor and, but I guarantee you that he has a calculator in his pocket because he's an accountant, and that's, that's the way it works. So I, I wanted, I'm just teasing you, but I want to thank you for, you're the perfect fit to help us make this work. In our discussions with all these various industry sectors, we discovered many of the weaknesses to the PPP, PPP program. It's a wonderful, that is a wonderful program. It's making all the difference to many, many, many businesses, which means thousands and thousands, tens of thousands of jobs across our country, but it has limitations. And all of these red lines and, and some changes that aren't even reflected in the red lines are the, are a reflection of your nimbleness and desire to make this program as helpful as possible, to enhance and expand upon and improve the PPP program, and I think that's what we've accomplished here, so I wanted to thank you. That's, it's tremendous that you've been so, so cooperative and, and helpful in that regard. I want to make sure that there, one of the changes is, at first, it was going to be just realtors, I'm not, sorry, it was going to be just restaurateurs that would receive the two-week preference. That's been expanded now, so I, I want to make sure the public understands that this applies whether you are a, a barber, those that cut our hair, those that, that perform many of those, those kind of services. You know, they're, they're not in, well, we're hopeful now that they're on the cusp of being reopened, but as tough as it's been for restaurants, some people like little gyms and workout studios and whatnot, they're completely shut down, they have no, no opport- They have no, no opportunity yet to make a nickel. So I appreciate you expanding those that are being included in this first, the first two weeks. I hope that there is enough money to go around to serve most, if not all, of those that have a need, but I'm very excited about that. Three specific questions. So how do, specifically, how does the public apply?
Sure. So Supervisor Maggert through the chair. Let me step back for just a minute because maybe I didn't speak clearly on this issue. So there's, with regard to preference, we are proposing to offer preference to all of the types of businesses that you described, meaning that their applications would be prioritized over others. But we are also proposing that for the first two weeks, that applications are limited to just restaurants. So that's, that may be.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. That is not clear from Section 2, Paragraph C.
Yep.
That is not clear, that it's limited to that. So I want to pose to my colleagues that it might be that we should consider expanding this beyond just restaurants for this reason. Restaurants certainly have been hit hard, but restaurants are able currently to operate with curbside pickup and delivery and whatnot. Many places like barbers, hair salons, gyms, many, many other industry sectors are completely shut out. To this day, they can't make a nickel. And many of them, there's no certainty as, and the governor has hinted that a few of them are on the cusp of opening, but there's no, there is no relief in sight for them. So I suggest to my colleagues that not, it shouldn't be limited to just restaurants that are allowed, that their loans be processed in the first two weeks because there are already programs to help them and we are, I hope, on the verge of having them open. So that is, that is something I'm suggesting to my colleagues to consider. Want to comment about that?
Sure. Maybe I can just share.
Have I misunderstood again?
No, you have not. No, not at all. But I will just share the thought process in prioritizing restaurants, given that there's so many restaurants throughout our community. They are a large employment base within the community of a variety of types of jobs, many of which, you know, have been eliminated or greatly reduced. The fact that restaurants are open actually kind of lends to the need for this program in order to, they can't just close the, well, I guess they could just close the doors altogether, but they have the ability to operate. And even now, as we move into Phase 2 of Stage 2, the ability to move forward in their business and start to open their business back up where they're going to be incurring this additional payroll costs and these additional costs. So that was the thought. I don't know a lot about all of the industries. I do know a little bit about restaurants, and I know that they operate on very tight margins to begin with, and there's a fairly low rate of success frankly in the restaurant business. We see many not make it in good times through the first year or two years. So that's, we saw that as a, as a kind of a critical area of employment here locally. That's why they were prioritized. But I understand your concerns, and please don't take my comments to take anything away from the other sectors that are struggling greatly. I've been on a few of the small business calls as well and heard some of those stories. So I don't take anything away from what they're experiencing right now either.
I appreciate your concern, and those are certainly valid points. On the flip side, and I don't mean to diminish one sector over another, if you're an independent contractor or a sole proprietor, you don't qualify for unemployment. Those are people that have nothing coming to them to help. So they are desperate to have something to tide them over. If you're the salon owner and you have people, or a barber shop, and you have people that rent those booths from you, there is nothing coming through the door to help them. So there's a great deal of need. One of the saddest things to me is I look into the eyes on these Zoom calls of some of these businesses that are before us is I'm thinking to myself, how many of the people in this call are not going to survive? They will not be in business when the green light finally comes. They aren't capitalized sufficiently. They aren't, they don't have the kind of, the sophistication of counsel and advice. They're not going to make it, and it's tragic to see that. So I'm just looking for a way to spread that out as much as possible. By the way, I want to applaud the, one element of this is to provide free business counseling to those businesses that are struggling through this small, you can explain that in more detail if you'd like, but that's a great element of it as well. So, you know, my colleagues can weigh in on whether they think we should expand this to more than just restaurants in the first two weeks, that's fine. And I want to thank Margot and you, Jim, for working with the banks to make this a workable arrangement for them. It's, you know, we are, you thought the PPP program, it's hard to say that fast. My mom used to tell me, slow down, Mike, and you'll speak better. The PPP program, we thought that was put together quickly. This is at light speed compared to that. So we have some little wrinkles we're working out with banks, and I applaud you for continuing to do that. So with all that said, my colleagues can weigh in on what they want to do about the two-week preference. How do people apply and when can they apply?
So it's, they will apply through the lenders. So we're working on the agreements with the banks this week. We hope to launch next week. The banks will be the recipient of the applications, so they will be the ones. So anyone that would be interested would contact one of those four banks. I'd ask them not to contact them until we're ready to launch because they won't, they won't know what to do yet. So we will be advertising on our webpage and getting that word out, but they will apply and provide all documentation to the lenders. The lenders will do their due diligence, review those application guidelines, make sure that the applicants conform with our program guidelines, make a recommendation to the county. The county will approve that loan, and through the auditor, controller, and treasurer, tax collector, we will fund those loans directly to the lending institutions who either will or will have already dispersed proceeds to the applicants. So I hope that's a, that's a high-level overview of the process.
Someday, we're going to look back on the term I'm about to use and we'll chuckle at it, but you'll know as soon as I say this that what will eventually be the humor of it, but it's significant here. Are we talking days, not weeks? Are we talking weeks, not months? Give me a sense of how long before you think we'll be up and rolling?
Well, I think we'll be taking applications next week.
Very good. Thank you. So I hope we widely advertise that. That would be important. Many people are worried already that they're not a customer of those four banking or credit union institutions. So can you just clarify to make certain everybody's crystal clear that they do not need to be an existing customer of that bank?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Supervisor Maggert. All of our lenders have agreed that there's no condition to be an existing or a future customer of the bank in order to participate in this program. They will take any applicant. That includes credit unions, where membership's typically required, but because of the way that we've structured this, the regulators over those credit unions have agreed that they can offer our program without membership criteria on applicants. So it'll be wide open at any lender.
Thank you. With that, I heartily support this program. It's vital to whether or not businesses in our community are going to survive, and that means jobs in our community are going to survive. So I heartily recommend to my colleagues and motion to support the formation of this program, and I'll look forward to my colleagues' comments as to what preference, if any, we give one industry over another. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggert. I trust your expertise. Your comments are sound. I think you're brilliant. I am partial to what Supervisor Maggert has said. You get the point. I know that you will be consistently compassionate to the people in this community who are desperate. And, you know, whatever that looks like, I'm very, very partial to what Supervisor Maggert has said and as asked of you, and, you know, without trying to micromanage your work, I think that's totally spot on. And again, I appreciate you. So Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Nice job.
You're welcome.
Good hire, Ryan. Surround yourself with people that are smart people, and you look good. I want to ask you about your document that you handed out under the, first of all, I'll second the motion, and I agree with not just limiting it to restaurants. And I think that under Item 2, Item C, when you say other nonessential industries, I think that will cover movie theaters. Is that correct?
Yes, they are a nonessential industry.
Right. The reason I bring that up is I was contacted by Maya Theaters. They believe, the Maya in Delano believes that their ownership or the way they're configured would qualify.
Great.
So I want to, I want to tell them to get in touch with you.
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Another question I have is, and this just came to me as you were speaking, the very last item, that item, the three I's under item, what I guess becomes G at the end of the document.
Yes.
I see a 1 and a 4. You said 4, not 14%.
So the 4 was struck out.
Okay.
And replaced with a 1. It's tough to see with the red line version.
The 4 is red in my version, but the 1 is underlined, so.
Correct. The 1 was added, the 4 was removed.
Gotcha. Does the 1%, just, I'm sure that it does not, but I want to ask you, does the 1% become taxable because it's forgiven?
So, actually, so does the 1% become taxable if it's forgiven? That's a good question.
I don't, I don't think the way it's structured that the principal would become taxable, but what about the interest?
So, you know, I, actually, I think the whole thing is probably taxable.
Really?
And, and I am not in a position to provide tax advice to people participating in this program, and our loan document will explicitly say that. The federal PPP program specifically is excluded from being counted as taxable income, but they also exclude the business expenses it pays for as deductible expenses to those businesses. That's my understanding at least.
But this one was different from that?
We don't have control over determining something as taxable income or not.
Understood.
Because we're not the federal government. So we have to assume it is taxable and, but if it's spent on employee salaries and employee and business costs, those costs would be deductible to the business as well.
That's why I assumed the principal would be fine.
Yes. So that's a good question on the interest. I will look into that if we need to modify our program in order to make that not taxable. The interest is not a big component to us. So if we can exclude the interest as being, triggering a taxable event, then we will do that.
Okay, thank you.
May I weigh in on that, Supervisor Couch?
Please.
The IRS is, the last time I have checked, for federal purposes, the principal of the loan is forgiven and not taxable. The expenditures paid with loan proceeds are not deductible, as is typical in California. California is 100% the opposite.
Okay.
So in California, they say that the loan forgiveness is completely taxable, California purposes, but, and although I haven't seen clarity on this, that would lend us to assume that if I must pay tax on the loan proceeds, I am able to deduct the expenses which I paid with it. So who knows where that will settle? Everything is in flux these days, but that's the current treatment. And I would imagine, although they need to consult, every participant needs to consult with their tax advisor, I suspect that this will be viewed as all of those other loans are being viewed by the state and feds. Thank you.
Thank you. The, this is not part of this, but the previous, a previous component of what we did was an amount that was set aside for cities.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have a conversation with you about that because I'm now hearing that I think, are we saying to cities that their payroll, even if it was overtime or something that was due to COVID-19 response, is not allowable?
The original utilization plan specifically said non-staff costs, and that was intentional at the time because we wanted to use those funds to make sure the cities weren't incurring additional costs that they wouldn't otherwise bear. Existing staff wouldn't be an additional cost. That would be costs that they would have anyway. So it was originally, it was originally written that way. I've heard those similar comments from cities. We're preparing those agreements right now. They will be coming back to it at your next board meeting, and we're addressing that issue. So.
In the, looking at the incremental costs that they might have incurred over and above what would be normal?
We are looking at allowing payroll costs with provisions that they are responsible to the federal government for ensuring that those are adequately documented and allowable and adequate provisions to protect the county in case they're not. So, and I am in discussion with the cities on that issue.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think I started this by seconding the motion, didn't I? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Supervisor Gleason.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Was the questions Supervisor Couch just asked the same questions we were talking about yesterday?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, 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 I'm really glad you were doing it because I don't, I'm not, I'm about an inch deep in this world. I'm not that good with accounting. I got a couple dumb questions you maybe can help me out with. I have a business that I'm thinking of that opened, a brewery that opened in last year, at the end of last year. And brand-new brewery have not established any record of expenses or schedule Cs or all this stuff you have here that you're going to use to help define the contributions of the loans you give to these businesses. How does this, how does a young business who doesn't, can't satisfy your need for established records apply for a loan, and how do they qualify?
Well, a business like that would presumably have employees, so.
I don't know if they're sole proprietor. I just don't know.
So if they, if they have employees, they will have payroll tax filings, they will have internal payroll reports that can be used in order to support what their payroll cost is. If it's a sole proprietor and they were open in 2019, we will look back at their 2019 tax return, and it should have, you know, some calculations on there. Now, if they began in 2019 and they, you know, and they didn't make any money in 2019, then that may be a complicated issue. So there are some.
You'll personalize your discussions with each of those businesses, no steadfast?
Yeah, the banks will be working with those businesses, and yes, we will work with them to try to support, support getting the documentation that they have. We do have to ensure that they meet the program guidelines. And so, but, but, you know, depending on their situation, we will do our best to work with them to get their information, to show, you know, whatever it shows. If they qualify, they qualify, but we will work with them and be flexible in what they produce.
Thank you. You've answered that question. Last question is, I hear a lot about, the most businesses I hear from, whether it's talking to the mayors or talking to chambers of commerce are salons. I mean, the salon's getting crushed. And so I agree with Supervisor Maggert and his thoughts that they need, they need immediate support, and I'm supportive of that two-week period of maybe including a wider range, array of businesses to see what we can do. I'm sure you're pressed for time and resources, but whatever we can do for gyms and salons, I sincerely appreciate and support. Thank you. Good job, Jim.
Thank you. My understanding of the motion in the direction from the board is to not make this program exclusive to restaurants for the first two-week period.
I think that's accurate.
That's my understanding. Outside of that, the, really, the action before you being recommended is approval for the CAO, or does it need to enter into various agreements in order to move forward with this program? The program guidelines have been presented. They're not necessarily being approved specifically. We are following them, but we need flexibility in order to continue to define them and work with them. So they will be in substantial conformance with what you have in front of you, and we will certainly follow your direction. But we will continue, as we come across issues, continue to try to work through those as we implement the program. So any major changes, we bring back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Zervis. I appreciate you. Supervisor Gleason, are you done? Thank you. Supervisor Scrivner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Mrs. Zervis, thank you for targeting this, our program for those gaps that were left from the PPP program. I think that was very smart. As you, as you pointed out, there were many, many businesses that benefited from it, but there were some that weren't able to for one reason or the other, and we've been talking quite a bit about those. I also agree with eliminating the preference for restaurants for the first two. Not that restaurants haven't been hit tremendously by this. We all acknowledge that. But I'm thinking about this in terms of timing. You have our efforts now through our, what we're going to be considering later today with the readiness plan, to send that to the governor's office. Hopefully then we'll get the green light, I believe we will, for acceleration through Stage 2, which is going to allow our restaurants to expand their operations, some in-house dining, other things that we're going to be able to come up with for them, hopefully that will help them to do some outdoor seating so they can increase the social distancing and still try to maximize the amount of folks that can come in. I think there's a lot of pent-up demand for people ready to go out and eat, and so, and that's, that's going to be exciting when that happens. But when you're, when you're looking at salons and gyms and others that are in Stage 3, the best, the best news that they have received up to this date was an was an indication by the governor, maybe by the beginning of next month. And that's, that's pretty open-ended, and that will, that will depend on how the data points from all the different counties continue to track for how quickly I think the administration will say, okay, phase three is, uh, stage three is okay. As I indicated in my comments during, uh, board member reports, you know, we're, we will be eager to push for that opening of, of stage three, just as soon as we get green-lighted to accelerate through stage two. Um, and hopefully we'll still, we'll see the same regional variance, um, when it comes to stage three that we're going to see in the latter part of stage two, meaning that some counties would be able to move into that more quickly if they're able to demonstrate certain, certain metrics. But with those salons, um, I know that, um, like the place where I get my haircut, you know, I've spoken to the salon owner and some of the folks.
You got your hair cut at a dog groomer?
It, well, I was about to. I was thinking about going to the dog groomer as soon as they open those up. Um, believe me, it was tempting, um, but, but there's a, but that line is pretty long as well. And so I probably would have to wait. Um, but, um, but anyway, the point is, I know that, I know that the folks that, that have the stations, that pay the rent to cut the hair, to do the nails, et cetera, they have qualified for, for some form of pandemic unemployment. Not all of them have received it, you know. A few have gotten, have gotten their payments, some haven't. So there are a lot of people that are still struggling a lot, even if they could qualify, um, because of, you know, just waiting for that to go through the bureaucracy. And so if we're looking at that from a timeline of hopefully stage three can occur at the beginning of, of June, I think it's really important for us to allow those folks to qualify, those owners of those salons that are still paying rent, that still have overhead expenses, um, but, you know, presumably no money coming in whatsoever for them to be able to qualify. And I, the gyms are in that category as well. And so I, I understand why, um, you had proposed that for the restaurants. Don't disagree with your logic, but I think that because the timelines have now shifted in regards to restaurants and, and maybe what will happen with the stage three businesses, salons, gyms, et cetera, that it's important for us to allow this, this program, um, to have no preference, um, but just to try to target those small businesses, as you wisely proposed, um, that need it the most right now, and, and will probably continue to need it, um, for the next several weeks. And, um, and so I, I appreciate Supervisor Maggert bringing that up. I think, um, obviously, we're all on board with that. Um, so those are my comments. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Supervisor Scrivner. I see the CAO's desk has punched in. Do you have comments, Ryan?
Yeah, I didn't have an opportunity to say it upfront, but I just wanted to say, entering into this, getting the money, uh, we wanted to do this as thoughtfully as possible. We wanted to do it so that it had provided maximum value, uh, to the folks that would be receiving it, and we wanted to make sure that it was done as quickly as possible. In fact, I think we're probably moving quicker than any other county that I can think of our size. If, certainly if we're, um, doing this next week. So I, I do want to agree that Jim was a good hire Supervisor Couch, and I appreciate all of his leadership on this task.
If I could say to that point, uh, I understand that we are significantly ahead of Fresno County. All respect to our, our, our Central Valley friends, but we are profoundly ahead of them. They know it. They're asking me as we sit here, uh, how did Kern County do, pull this off? Frankly, hats off, gentlemen. I, I really mean that. And of course, Zervis, uh, you know, you're amazing. So we've, we've, uh, taken comment from the dais and also staff. We're now going to move to public comment. I understand we have some input, which of course will continue to shape what we do as we receive the information that our community needs us to be aware of. So that's the process, and I think it's a good one. So Kathy.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have, uh, four recorded comments that we're going to hear. Kelly Bearden from CSUB Small Business Development Center provided an audio recording. And then we received letters from Nick Ortiz, Greater Bakersfield Chamber, Rhonda Newport, Bakersfield Association of Realtors, and Jay Tamzy, Kern County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. You have hard copies of the three, the last three, uh, letters that I just read off. So we're going to first hear these recorded comments. We also have a member of the public that is standing by, ready to provide, uh, comments via teleconference as soon as we're done.
Oh, one person for live input?
That is correct.
Okay, so if anyone would, in the next few minutes, like to get in the queue, uh, how would they do so?
They would need to call 661-868-3605.
Do that now?
They would have to do that now. They would call 661-868-3605 to receive the call-in number and code in order to get in the queue to make comment.
Excellent.
Okay, so now we're gonna, we're gonna hear the recorded comments first.
Perfect. Thank you. You can have a seat.
Hi, this is Kelly Bearden, K-E-L-L-Y-B-E-A-R-D-E-N. And I would like to comment on May 19th meeting at 9:00 AM on Agenda Item Number 27, the Kern County Small Business Relief Program. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Kelly Bearden with the CSUB Small Business Development Center. I would first like to thank you for your continued commitment to our Kern County small businesses. I am speaking this morning in support of the Kern Small Business Relief Program, an investment in assisting our small businesses countywide in surviving and rebounding from the dire economic consequences they are currently facing. The challenges are there for nearly all small businesses, but our hospitality, travel, and event-related businesses have been severely impacted. It can be a lifeline for hundreds of small businesses potentially funded through the Kern Small Business Relief Program, and I encourage your support. Thank you, and have a great day.
Letter from Nick Ortiz, Greater Bakersfield Chamber. On behalf of the Greater Bakersfield Chamber, I would like to express our organization's support for the Kern Small Business Relief Program, funded through the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Under the guidelines for the CRF, we understand that the county has no obligation to spend these funds on small businesses. However, we appreciate the focus from the county to prioritize our local small business community and our members in this, in this way. The resources that will be provided from the Kern Small Business Relief Program have the ability to provide a needed lifeline that can have a large impact on our local businesses who are struggling to stay afloat during this season. After many discussions with our members, we know that although the federal stimulus programs, like the Paycheck Protection Program, have been a large help to many, there are also many issues that have been encountered. We support this localized attempt to fix those shortcomings and provide the extra necessary assistance to our local economy. We continue to applaud how quickly the county has taken leadership during this pandemic, and we appreciate the CAO's office for the opportunity to provide feedback. Letter from Rhonda Newport, President, Bakersfield Association of Realtors. I write on behalf of the Bakersfield Association of Realtors, an organization representing over twenty-two hundred members of industry partners, most of whom conduct businesses, independent contractors and sole proprietors. Members of the Bakersfield Association of Realtors not only help make the dream of home ownership a reality, they help build better communities. First, we want to thank the board for your leadership in finding innovative ways to help local businesses who are struggling as a result of the shelter in place. The proposal that is before you today will no doubt help many small businesses throughout Kern County. We support staff's recommendation in creating a local program designed to provide forgivable loans for businesses to cover payroll, rent, and mortgage interest, similar to the federal PPP program. The county's program goes beyond the federal program to also cover other business expenses. However, we submit to you an additional recommendation to also include independent contractors and sole proprietors in the local program. Most of our members operate under 1099 contracts. If the implementation of the PPP program is any reflection of how this program will work, many people were not eligible for federal loans because they did not have business bank accounts, and the program was administered by the bank. Realtors were not the only 1099s affected. Hairdressers, barbers, consultants, construction contractors, and many others were also affected. Based on previous discussions at your board meetings, I believe it is your board's intent to also help all those industries. We also believe this program should be open to all local businesses from the start. Please do not phase in this program. Clearly, as evidenced by current conditions, phased approaches only seem to add to the confusion. We applaud and support your efforts to protect the businesses that are so vital to Kern. This letter is from Jay Tamzy, President and CEO, Kern County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. First, the Kern County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, KCHCC, would like to commend and thank each of you for your support and dedication to our small business community, nonprofit organizations, self-employed individuals that face financial uncertainty amongst the economic downturn caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. On behalf of KCHCC, I write to express our strong support for the proposed Kern Small Business Relief Program, KSBRP. KCHCC represents several hundreds of small businesses in the county. Right now is the time to act and be the voice for our chamber members and local business community. The KSBRP is much needed for our small businesses during these uncertain and tough economic times. It would help us save vital industries that generate substantial state and local revenue. Kern County businesses, which collectively employ hundreds of thousands of hard-working folks, were excluded from the CARES Act Paycheck Protection Program, PPP, including chambers of commerce, trade associations, and other 501(c)(6) tax-exempt organizations who are committed to improving and assisting businesses at national, state, and local levels. The KSBRP would allow eligible businesses and various nonprofit organizations within our chamber to apply for funding. As a chamber, we are here to present our local valued members and are fortunate to have this program fund, which will assist our small business community and provide hope for those who are in vulnerable positions. We urge you to support the Kern Small Business Relief Program, which will be a key program for our county's economic recovery. Thank you again for your time.
Now, Madam Chair and members of the board, we do have one member of the public, Jasmine De La Gila, who has been waiting patiently this whole time. So Jasmine, if you would go ahead and unmute your mic by, uh, using star six, we would appreciate your comments.
Good morning, Jasmine.
Good morning. Um, thank you. Appreciate it. For Supervisor, to the Chair, Jasmine De La Gila, with Leadership Council for just enough honnibility. We appreciate the county's inclusion of not-for-profit organizations in its local business assistance program. As not-for-profit organizations are critical components of the economy and will be indispensable for supporting the county's recovery during this difficult period. We have several questions regarding... Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. We have several questions regarding the proposed program aimed at understanding how the county will target resources to populations and neighborhoods oftentimes underrepresented in business assistance efforts. Specifically, some questions are around how is the county planning to ensure that businesses in and serving lower-income neighborhoods will have access to resources, and how will the county ensure that they are prioritized? How will the county reach and ensure investments, for example, for Black and Indigenous and people of color-owned businesses and nonprofits that may not participate in the chambers? How will the county ensure that the process is culturally and linguistically accessible for all? And these items are important for us to address and understand to ensure that everyone has equal opportunity to gain access to the resources during these very difficult times. Um, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jasmine. Supervisor Scrivner, did you punch in again, except from before? Okay. And CAO, we're good. Okay. Jasmine, thank you for your input. Uh, I know Mr. Zervis will consider those remarks and be as flexible as you possibly can under, uh, pretty difficult circumstances. Do you want to respond to anything you've heard, Mr. Zervis? You don't have to. I'm just making the offer.
I, yeah, just, just what brief, I have a brief, two comments, really. You heard a, a voice message from Kelly Bearden with the Small Business Development Corp. And I, and I failed to mention, but Supervisor Maggert did, and I want to emphasize that as part of this program, we're encouraging, um, all businesses that are participating to seek counseling, business counseling services from either the Small Business Development Corp. or another, uh, approved SBA, um, business consultant, all of which is provided at no cost in an effort to help, um, businesses during this, this transition or really a business continuity plan to understand how, how do you survive and what does your business look like coming out of this? So, um, so that is, that is a component of this program to try to provide, not just funding, but, um, but that ongoing support to help them kind of imagine and plan for what their business is going to look like, um, coming out of this trying time. And, and to the, to the, um, uh, comments that were just received, uh, from the public comment, uh, we are, we are working with a diverse group of lenders that, that are represented across Kern County. We are going to be engaging with all of the chambers of commerce in, throughout the county, not, not just in Bakersfield, but through the Bakersfield Chamber of Commerce, um, but in Delano, in Shafter, in Wasco, and, and all of the outlying communities to try to, to try to reach those groups. That being said, uh, if the caller or other organizations would like to help us get the word out and promote these, promote this program into, into those communities specifically, please contact the county. I would, I would be happy to work with you in that capacity.
I really appreciate that. Jasmine is a person who's very connected, in particular, in my district, with many folks that I think could benefit tremendously from understanding the apparatus better, and really with a warm welcome. I think it would serve us all, right, to be on the same page about what's possible and how important partnership really is.
That sounds great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work. Okay, I think that we have taken all input regarding this matter. That was quite smooth. Thank you very much, Kathy, and to the CAO's office and team. Thank you. I am going to go to our last item, and I'm going to ask our sheriff, Donnie Youngblood, to please make his way. Oh, excuse me. Uh, our sheriff will still make his way down while we take a vote. So, uh, the, the, we need a motion, and I believe we have a motion, and then we received a second from Supervisor Couch. Please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved. All eyes.
Excellent. Number forty-five, we pulled from consent so we could hear from our sheriff, is a request to accept an in-kind donation from the Bakersfield Three Charity of a J.W. Fisher's Manufacturing, Inc., SSS 600,000 Side Scan Sonar System with a value of $17,015. Donnie, good morning.
Thank you very much. I've missed all of you the last couple of meetings, and I'm sure you've missed me. I have a couple of items that, just before I talk about that, a couple of things very briefly I want to mention. Number one, uh, our county was again proud this last weekend. As, uh, local North High graduate Kevin Harvick won his 50th NASCAR race, uh, which puts him number twelve all-time in NASCAR. So Kevin, well done. We also had another person this last weekend who made Kern County very proud, uh, and you may not know who that person is. Uh, he, his life, a very young man who, uh, went to the bottom. And quite frankly, in his words, drugs, you name it. And this young man came out number five in American Idol. Name is Dylan James, and he's outstanding. And I just wanted to say, we're proud of you.
Outstanding. I love it. Thank you, Donnie.
The sonar, the, the Bakersfield Three, uh, they made this happen. This is a piece of equipment that we've had to borrow from Tulare County over and over and over again, uh, to help search the rivers and the lakes for, uh, uh, missing bodies. Uh, so this is going to be a significant gain. I wanted to thank those three ladies. Uh, you know, they, they keep me on my toes. They keep this county on their toes. And congratulations to those, to those three ladies. We also are going to try and integrate, um, a, a rapid DNA system with the sonar. What rapid DNA is, when we find bones, specifically bones, because this will work with bones, or body parts in the river, it takes us a long time, especially with bones, to get a result on DNA. We went through this with the Bakersfield Three, where months and months and months of, of not knowing if it was their loved one. Rapid DNA will give us a, a result. We take a swab from relatives, and within, uh, one, two days, we have a, a, a match. So this, we're, we're working, it's expensive. It's somewhere between a hundred and $150,000 a year for five years. Well worth every penny for, uh, the people that we serve in this county. So to the Bakersfield Three ladies, thank you very much.
Donnie, I really appreciate, uh, your gratitude to these remarkable women, these fearless mothers who are, uh, you know, will not stop searching for answers for their loved ones. And, uh, they really are some of the most incredible people that I've ever met. And to this board's credit, Donnie, for giving discretionary money to revive, you know, a program that we know can work well with law enforcement and the. a program that we know can work well with law enforcement and the public as it relates to getting answers for people. And so this is near and dear to my heart and I want to, I've offered myself to the Bakersfield Three Moms to be part of their fundraising efforts, to, you know, continue to get these kind of equipment and structural changes that put us on the cutting edge, Donnie. And, and so I want to offer myself to you as well and say, this is a great partnership that we could continue to do to improve the tools and the condition of our, not just law enforcement, of the families that are so desperate for answers, so.
I'm like Supervisor Gleason, I'm just one inch deep as well. That's a great saying, I have to remember that. There's a lot of truth in that for us, not just you.
Well, thank you for your attention to these matters and to those moms who just went through Mother's Day, Donnie, I might add, you know, God bless them and their service to this county.
Quite honestly, if you lose a loved one and you don't know where, how, for sure, time, you know, excuses don't sit well. And these Bakersfield Three made it very clear to me that excuses didn't sit well. I was just trying to avoid being on Dr. Phil, you know, and, but.
They're quite talented.
They are. And thank, thank them very much.
Indeed. Thank you so much, Donnie, it's the best of us. Okay, we're going to adjourn to closed session, be back at 2:00.
We need to make a motion on this item and I want to verbalize that we do not have any public comment waiting to be heard on this item.
Thank you so much.
Motion to staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and several seconds, so can we cast a vote, please?
Hang on. Please recast your vote Supervisor Maggert. Thank you. The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you very much. We are going to adjourn to closed session, we'll see you at 2:00.